Councilmember on Padana?
Yeah.
Councilmember Eugenia?
Yeah.
Councilmember Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Bernworth?
Here.
Mary Dale?
Yes. Uh, please stand up with my religions. May sir, would you be honored?
Ready? Begin.
I believe in the United States of America. And to your father, which is one nation, united in this law, that governs the justice of all. Any adjustments to the agenda? Um, Mr. Mayor, no adjustments. Okay. Um.
Any action taken in closed session?
Mr. Mayor, I have no final action to report.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to C1. Matters not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the council concerning any item within the council's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the mayor, and at that time state your name and address the record. The mayor reserves the right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. It is requested longer presentations be submitted to the council. Right? Any, anybody? No? I don't see anybody out there, so we're just gonna skip C2, move right on.
We did not receive any comments or anyone on, uh, the Zoom wish to comment.
Well, I wasn't even thinking of that right now. So now we're gonna move right on to Captain Bill Perkins.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. I've been up too long. Good evening, Honorable Mayor. Uh, City Councils of the, uh, city of Imperial, uh, thank you very much for inviting me back. Uh, I'd like to take an opportunity tonight to kind of tell you what the men and women out at the Navy base, uh, have accomplished in the last year. Uh, and I think we've got a couple slides that, um, perfect. Just see, okay, perfect. My clicker works. So just a quick reminder of, uh, of what it is that our base mission is. Uh, obviously, you know, we have two major priorities. Uh, building advanced warfighters that, that, that create the future Navy that, uh, deploys whenever the nation calls on it. Uh, and then my role as the installation commander is to provide a base that facilitates all of that, uh, sustaining the fleet, enabling those warfighters, and, uh, making sure that our families and workforce are, are, are supported. Uh, and we do that by providing the best possible combat air training we can throughout the ranges and across the base there, uh, and by doing that, by being great partners throughout the valley. And we've done that for fifty ye- fifty years, um, seventy-five years as the base, uh, turned seventy-five last May, and I'm very proud with that the men and women continue to, uh, to represent that. Um, so last year, the chief of naval aviation and training, Rear Admiral Westendorf, oversees all student pilots, uh, graduated a thousand and forty-two. And that's across all type model series, helicopters, large land-based aircraft like I used to fly, uh, or the jets that come out here, the jet student pilots. So of that thousand and forty-two new winged aviators last year, uh, over four hundred of them showed up at one point in time in their training career, um, to, uh, to touch this base and to operate in this airspace out here. So a huge part of that last year, uh, we had more missions, uh, in two thousand twenty-one than we did in two thousand nineteen, the year before COVID. Uh, so not only did we figure out how to operate safely through COVID, we did it at a very high operations tempo. Uh, we continued support across the entire naval aviation enterprise. That's every fleet squadron, every helicopter squadron, and the Marine Corps as they bond together as teams. Uh, so the whole NAE, um, are, we are, we're aligned there. We had a homeland defense, uh, detachment out there for a while, supporting, uh, defense of the border and other things that the, uh, that the Homeland Defense Department needed. Uh, we were able to enable that particular activity to, to ongoing. Uh, and we had a United Kingdom, one of our key NATO allies, was out here for nine months, and they're planning to come back in March, uh, for an additional nine months. Uh, so that was ongoing throughout the year. A new system that we have, an unmanned helicopter. So it's a Bell four oh seven, uh, that flies around in the skies predominantly over the base, uh, but it will be reaching out to the ranges here very soon, uh, with no pilot aboard. Uh, so that combat capability has been deployed overseas for about eight years now, and, uh, we're just kind of getting our feet underneath it. It's how do we build up the training pipeline, uh, and NAFL Central, Naval Air Weapons Station China Lake, a little bit up to the north of Riverside, are two key components in making sure unmanned systems in the future of the Navy, man unmanned teaming, uh, is, is working. So we're proud to host the MQ eight Fire Scout, uh, and their team out here. Uh, and we got back to critical joint drills. And what I, when I call a joint drill is my team on base integrating with another team from out in the community, coming onboard the base and practicing something. Uh, so late in the year, we were able to get El Centro SWAT out there to do a large active shooter drill, uh, where my team integrated in with their team, and we did some practice on techniques and procedures. Uh, and then very late in the year, we had a reach helicopter that flies out of, uh, Imperial County, come and do a live patient transfer, so that in the event we have a mass casualty or a critical medical situation where ground transport is not appropriate, we've practiced, we're ready to get the person lifted by air, uh, get that helicopter into the airspace, get that patient out of there, get them the critical support they need. Uh, so I'm happy to that, and I look forward to continuing that. Uh, we had our virtual airshow last year, so COVID didn't really allow us to do a full event. Uh, and I know you're all gonna ask me, so I'll get to that. Um, but, uh, last year, I was very proud with the support from the community, very proud with the support from KXO Radio, uh, to pull off a safe, uh, virtual event in the middle of COVID. Uh, and we also turned seventy-five. Um, so if you're not familiar with Captain Kevin Bacon, he's a retired Navy captain who is also a well-known cartoonist. He likes to poke fun at the, at the Navy life. He also grew up here in Brawley. Uh, and, uh, so that picture on the bottom left is me receiving a, uh, signed presentation from him at our diamond anniversary, explaining why people really come to El Centro to fly, which is not about the great training and great people and great, uh, tower facilities and great ranges. It's really about the carne asada, so. So that uh that was awesome. Um, so looking, uh one thing before I look ahead to next year. Uh, first, the men and women out at the base were honored to be selected as the Navy Region Southwest Small Installation of the Year. So highest performing, small base on the West Coast, and I'm waiting on the results of the national competition, so I'm hoping to have that uh pretty soon. We have also reached out for uh range safety and environmental stewardship. So I've done this on a bunch of different levels and uh there's, there's two factors to this. There's one, making sure the Navy continues to be good partners with the environment, being good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars and resources. Uh, but also to ensure that we're doing everything we can to keep members of the community from from injuring themselves uh in and around Navy operations. So for for decades, the Navy has had land out in the Imperial Valley that is federal land. Uh, and there's been various levels of signage out there, but that that has not deterred everyone from incurring in and and proceeding into uh the Navy ranges. So we got some of it fenced and it does, the fencing does two parts. It one, it's a little bit more of a visible boundary on where active bombing and more so than bombing, I'm using lasers out there now. Where lasers get backscatters off of rocks and you can't really control where the lasers go. Uh, it stays within the boundaries of the range, so if you say off the range, everything's fine. Uh, the second thing it does is it keeps some of that uh transiting traffic off of the habitat area of the flat-tail horned lizard, which is very close to being an endangered species and we work very closely to monitor how the flat-tail horned lizard's habitat is impacted by Navy operations. And this fence helps preserve some of that recreational traffic away from the higher population areas of the lizard to help us in two fronts there. So I mentioned this only just to ask your advocacy with your community. Um, I know that, and I'm very well aware that um the folks who use this particular area and the picture on the bottom left of the slide is over by Superstition Mountain and the uh what's called uh informally known as the Sealy Dip, the uh off-road recreational area in that uh particular part of the training range. Um, I know that it's used by members of the valley, I know that it's used also by a a lot of transit to come into the valley in the weekend. So I'm just asking for help on education uh and advocacy to help us maintain our good environmental presence there. And then looking ahead to two thousand twenty-two, my main priority remains uh keeping the base in a posture to provide, to support and enable uh pilot production, that's student pilots. Uh, for those not aware, almost every aircraft you see is probably being flown by a student or being flown by no pilot, as I mentioned earlier. Um, so we're, we have to continue to enable the uh the facility that uh that allows them to meet their metrics uh so that the uh the fleet squadrons are manned at the right level. Uh, Marine Corps and Air Force integration is another future uh outlook area. Uh, Marines are here all the time, uh making sure that they are able to seamlessly integrate with Navy operations. Uh, Air Force also comes in and out of here frequently, uh whether it's fighters from Luke or or transport aircraft or even the uh the Thunderbirds, which you see on the slide. Uh, the Thunderbirds are now a um are going to be a permanent uh um transient detachment out here. So every February, just like the Blue Angels have learned, this is a great place to fly, well, the Thunderbirds have now learned that as well. So they're gonna be coming back for about a week to ten years and you'll get to see two flight demonstration teams in your, in your airspace. So I'm pretty happy with that. Uh, the Festival of Flight. So I am about a week away from making a formal decision. I am very closely aligning to what the county is doing with the fair, so we're watching that, uh those discussions happen. Um, and uh I hope to be able to announce by middle, middle of February what we intend to do. Um, just, just to answer the obvious question, I'm trying to do as much of a live event as we, as we safely can do. So it'll be more than last year, probably less than a full show somewhere in there. Uh, we're gonna continue to advocate for fire and emergency medical support and police engagement for joint drills uh when able, so we'll be reaching out uh through the various community partners to to do that. Uh, if you're not aware, so mutual aid works in both directions. So a year and a half ago, we had a structured fire on the base and fire was able to get onboard within about two minutes of the call uh and help us uh put that out uh with minimal damage. Uh, and we provided thirty-five uh structured fire supports out in the local community, whether that's brush fire or somebody's business or somebody's house, so so enabling the local community to help with that and over fifty-five calls for medical aid. So we're happy to be able to support that when we have the resources and the joint drills enable my team and the community teams to integrate very safely. Uh, so I want to continue to push that. We're also doing an economic impact study. So about every five years, the Navy takes a look at the dollar value that we bring to the county. Whether that's through lodging, whether that's the use of local businesses for contracting, whether that's the use, use of local business through uh buying of food or uh all the other different things we do that have an economic impact across the valley. Uh, we're going through about a six-month-long assessment of that so that we can publish the, to the dollar uh what our current and and projected future economic impact is uh to allow planning efforts like we spoke about last week on base to 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 uh to move forward. And obviously continuing the environmental stewardship and range utilization that that I spoke about. So, real quick, that's kind of what the men and women have done. Uh, I'm really honored and really proud to do, to uh to represent them out in town. Um, I know that we uh we do get the chance to integrate out to many uh community events with our color guard and honor guard and um and and flying upside down is pretty cool, too. So are there any questions for me that I can bring back to the base, because I don't know anything? Okay, well, thank you very much for your time. I'm always honored to come out and represent the base and uh take care of it.
Thank you for your service.
Moving on to consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'm making it, Mayor.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, uh please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay. On to F, action items, F one. And this is a discussion only on vandalism at city parks. Just by way of a uh brief introduction, uh Councilperson Eugenio asked that this item be on the agenda because she, like all of us, have noticed uh uh some uh differences happening in our community that uh unlike uh other communities had already been experiencing, we're starting to see it here in the City of Imperial. Uh, and so uh uh there uh Parks has put together a few slides uh to show indeed what it is that they're seeing. Uh, and uh then uh we'll open up for discussion, obviously. Um, uh catching people is 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 key to really uh uh being able to do anything significant as to, as to whoever it is that that did that. Uh, and so uh I think we're gonna talk about a few of the things that are already in our ordinances and and of course staff is taking a look at other things that might be done to uh uh curb this kind of behavior.
Um, Mayor, um members of the council, as you can see, uh we have the first slide, which kind of gives you a a a small, you know, point of view of the vandalism. This is Joshua Park restroom, as you can see, they've, you know, taken some kind of an object and just completely just destroyed the the toilets, the porcelain, you see the the shattered glass underneath on the ground. Some of the graffiti uh that that you'll also sleep, they'll see on the slides uh following. Here's some more, you know, they've, you know, of course they've, now they ripped the the seats off of the toilets, they've tagged on the partitions. And and these are, these are things that in Joshua, uh particularly is one of the the areas that have been uh highly impacted by graffiti and vandalism. Um, the restrooms at Joshua's is in particular and the playground area. Now, we do have cameras in uh facing the field and restrooms. Uh, since this has been on an increase, now we've adjusted the cameras uh with I T's help uh uh that are now facing the problem area, which is the bathroom area. Hopefully, we can uh be successful in and and catching the individuals that that are uh uh at least a a part of the problem. So here's, you know, here's a uh the, uh, you know, another case where they, you know, you could see the uh a rock or a piece of concrete where they've completely crushed the urinal. Um, and you know, this is, this is, this is again, this is one of the areas that we've noticed uh that has been on a rise for for vandalism and graffiti. So the, this here, you know, as you can see, is 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 a just a brief look into how uh they've the graffiti at Savannah Ranch. Savannah Ranch has been one of the areas also that's been highly impacted by specifically graffiti. Um, and you know, they've tagged everything from the walls uh that are into the residential area and, you know, A T and T uh phone boxes, uh transformer boxes. This is the wall on, along the uh Barioni Worthington, uh heading into the entrance of the neighborhood. You know, this, you know, it's just, it, it's kind of all over the place. Uh, and then, you know, finally, you see uh Eager Park, which is, uh Eager Park has been, we've been lucky not to have a a huge amount of vandalism and graffiti at Eager. But uh this, this, this last two or three months in particular, we've had a quite a bit of an increase. Um, you see as there's a well till where they bent all the way down. Um, that used to be, that used to clear a person of six foot or or taller when it was standing upright. So, you know, they, they made it a point to to bend that all the way down and and damage it to the point where we might be able to fix it, but most likely have to replace it. And this is the inside uh view of where they've kicked the partition walls in at Eager. Uh, this is, uh, these pictures show this is about the third time where I've had staff actually re-anchor everything in. Um, luckily, they haven't bent anything uh to where we can't reinstall. But uh, you know, this is, this is something that's been a problem, uh that's been on the rise for the last uh three and four months uh here at the city and 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 these are the 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 three areas that that we've seen it uh where it's the worst. And I'll, I'll stand for any questions if council has any.
Questions are come.
Right now, the bathrooms are open.
Yes, that is correct.
I don't think the damage is being done at night, it's being done during the daylight, so I would I don't think that would make a impact and then you have the labor to send somebody out, open them and close them, but I just think we just need to get control.
Part, part of that control is, is cameras. And for folks that are watching today, that's some of the steps we're gonna take to stop this. And so I think that people are going to be caught and they're gonna be prosecuted and they're gonna be ran through the ring to be dead. This is, this has got to stop. Everybody in this town pays good money for good quality parks and playground equipment. And this is disgusting and it's, it's something that's gotta stop and the graffiti too. So if you wanna come to our town, you wanna spray and you get caught, get ready to get busted, because we're not putting up with it.
Go on, Jeff. Look at these pictures. Also, I, I spent a couple of days, I'd say not a couple of days, several times doing park cleanups, uh park rebuilds. And, you know, I see a lot of the comments that people make that we need to fix our parks, we need to do things to our parks. But when money has to be spent to fix the problems that people are breaking, you know, toilets, urinals, partitions, um playground equipment, whatever it is, it all costs money. And it's not like stuff that we can go down to Costco and just buy that costs, you know, a couple hundred dollars. This has to be special equipment. This money that we're using to replace and build and fix this stuff could be used to make those parks better for what people are asking for. It's just, it's very, very difficult and I think this is where we need help from citizens within the City of Imperial to help us. Make that call. Call the police. You don't have to tell them your name, you can be anonymous. But gotta remember, it costs everybody. It costs me, too. So I just think we gotta speak up.
Personally, I think this, it's disgusting looking at those pictures. Um, you know, throughout COVID, we fought to have these parks reopened. And now they're finally reopened and it's like, you know, we've had a bunch of wild animals locked up for two years and they want, it's like they want them closed again because they clearly, you know, they were closed and now they're disrespecting them over and over and over. And so I think, you know, one of the things that was mentioned to us earlier is there's a hundred and fifty-dollar reward in our ordinance if people turn in, um you know, find somebody who is doing the graffiti, but the pure vandalism is, it's just disgusting and disheartening.
This is particularly hurtful to me when I take my six-year-old daughter uh to the parks and she sees graffiti and foul pictures painted um on the different play structures. Is there a correspondence that could occur within P D and the schools perhaps, like it it in the form of maybe one of their assemblies? Like, could um a member of the P D go and talk to students at the middle school or the high school about um the consequences of these kinds of actions? About the one hundred and fifty-dollar incentive, just about being vigilant um about our community? And is this, is this something first of all that's been done or something that can be done?
I'll talk to my uh school resource officer and try to uh have him talk to the school, maybe we can set up something.
I kind of wanna note, too, that this was kind of like the G-rated version of what's usually drawn in the parks. Um, as a parent, it's really hard when your seven-year-old daughter asks, hey, Mom, what's that a picture of? And it's in a park in this place that's specifically for kids.
And I'm gonna call it straight out what it is. It's sad that we live in a state that protects people that do these kind of things. Because in my day, and some of the ages of the kids that's doing this, if we got caught, we got reamed. And today, our police officers have their hands tied. That's disgusting, that's disgusting in itself that you have adults that pass laws that protect this kind of a- activity. So, anyway, we can go here all night long and and I think we've got our vision of what we're gonna do and and Corinne, I think that's great, it's just too bad that we can't go into the schools and let them know that we're on them and we know what's going on so they can hear it, but we can't do that because they're protected, so.
All of shame.
Yeah, no, I, I, I agree, I, I just, as Katie says, it's disgusting to think that we try to provide something nice. I, I also share, I've been on here long enough to know, when we built that, that um bathroom, that was the very first in the bathrooms that we built that was new into the community. And I think we spent, if my memory serves me correct, forty-eight thousand dollars to build that. That was fifteen thou- fifteen years ago or better. And I believe it was forty-eight thousand and to show you how things escalate in cost, I think the second one we built was on Joshua Tree and it was like eighty thousand for that one. Believe it or not, it wasn't even a week before they tore it up. And this is the kind of garbage that's got to stop. And our staff has, they have better things to do than to have to constantly be fixing up something 'cause some little bastard tears something up. It's just gotta stop. So, any other comments?
My last comment, um could, like, I know we're, we don't have a, a lot of resources when it comes to the um the officers have a lot more important things to do than to constantly be at the parks, but maybe if it were, if they could like when they're writing reports or something, if they could, if there's a, if there's parks that see more significant vandalism than others, is there a way that they could spend a little more time there while they're like writing a report or something to just be a little more vigilant? Have a more of a presence for these kids?
I'll talk, uh, what we'll do is we'll sit down with our supervisors or sergeant uh patrols and try to get a game plan and see what we can do about uh covering more of the parks during, during days.
Okay, um, let's go ahead and move on and they have to um discussion action repairs to V F D at Booster Pump. Jackie?
The one that we just had fixed about three months ago did, it's not the same drive, but it's the same breakage. So we're back to ask to have the fourth and final one repaired. Um, and rebuilt, the total cost is thirty-eight thousand eighty-seven twenty-five. Um and rebuilt, the the total cost is thirty-eight thousand eighty-seven twenty-five.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Question. I was trying to find this in the budget book. This is not budget, or is this coming out of something totally different? Coming out of maintenance?
That's the motor bearings.
That's the motor bearings.
Have the motors rebuilt.
Okay, so it's totally different.
Totally different thing, this is the V F Ds.
So this is out of miscellaneous?
It it it's, you know, it's that that large, um you've got part of that maintenance. It's a several hundred thousand dollar maintenance uh combined. It's just listed as maintenance. Okay.
I have a question though, too, sorry. How many of these booster pumps do we have?
Four.
Four.
At that station.
Is there any original parts still on any of them?
Um, well, this is gone, it's all good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I have a motion in a second. Please vote. Okay, moving on to F three, discussion action on water reservoir valves.
The tanks or the pumps, the the clay valve uh when it sees a differential pressure, it will automatically open the spring tension valve that uh works off of the the pressure in the pipe. If a pump creates too high a pressure, it doesn't shut off. For some reason, it opens up, pushes water back out the reservoir, so we don't overpressure the system. Um and it's, it's just an annual maintenance to come in and have these springs and the diagrams then replaced by the clay valve cut maintenance.
Any questions, comments?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, please vote. Okay, moving on to
Sorry, Mr. Tucker's uh vote did not record.
Okay, let's move on to F four. Cybersecurity infrastructure.
Sir, mayor council members, the item before you is for the purchase of cybersecurity hardware. And the amount of one thousand, one, I'm sorry, one hundred twenty-one thousand sixty-two dollars and eighteen cents. Um that represents the the refresh of of all the connectivity in our enterprise network. Um and I was after any questions that you may have? Oh, by the way, the, this is gonna be coming out of the ARPA funds, so there is no impact in the general fund.
This is gonna, is this a buy or lease?
Uh, it's a buy.
It's a buy.
Uh portion of that, the this uh technology is based on a cloud-based technology. This particular purchase includes five years of that subscription, and five years will have to renew the that portion. But the hardware will stay the same.
Make the motion to approval of purchase and dispersment for cybersecurity infrastructure items.
Yeah, motion in a second, please uh please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, all right. All right, we're gonna adjourn this city council meeting until the next regularly scheduled meeting, Wednesday, February sixteenth, uh twenty twenty-two at seven P M.